Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 17th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room in case of mishap and now join me as we re-pledge our loyalty to the flag of our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first time on the agenda is a new public hearing for justice, or continued public hearing for justice stakeouts. Making a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We've received some neighbors' letters in the interim, and Mr. Lockwood is here to represent the applicant. I believe we forwarded all the comments over to you already, and some of the neighbors are here tonight who I think will wish to speak when we open it up for public comment. Is there anything new you want to add tonight, Michael?
And if you do, please use the microphone.
Nothing new.
Nothing new right now. I know I do want to address the comments.
Let's start then first with Mr. Sotero. Comments?
It should be on.
Yeah, the first one was the chairman, myself, and the highway superintendent had a meeting there yesterday because there was some talk of possibly closing one of the two access points at a parking lot on the east side of the road. But after our meeting, I believe that we all felt that they should keep the two access points that they have there now rather than trying to funnel both cars and pedestrians through one access point. And I did notice, Mike, that on your drawings, it seems to imply that there's three access points there, that the southerly most one was open, but it's not. It's closed. So if you could just show that to be closed. And then I think some of the post and rail fence will have to be repaired in that area, too.
Correct. Yeah, I spoke to Joe about that. We'll be repairing the fence.
And there's no post fence down at what Pete's calling the most southern appears to be entry. I mean, it's not. It's curbed there, but the fence will need to be re-added there. There's no posts left.
Okay.
The second one was just, we had agreed at the last meeting that the existing parking lot to the south of the building was going to be remaining gravel. So just add a note there that existing gravel lot to remain. Number three, I know the last time, Mike, we did talk about details and such for some patron protection there. I know you talked about infilling the new vinyl fence posts with concrete and also probably placing some larger landscape boulders. But I didn't see anything on there. Maybe I missed it.
No, he submitted the plans the night of the meeting, so we discussed it, but he didn't have a chance to put those things in there yet.
Yeah, I will definitely have those. I'll have them in for the next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I don't remember that. Number four, I think, just to reiterate what was said the last time, was that we're not going to be able to allow a formal signed crosswalk there on Creek Road. Joe was basically operating without it before. I noticed on the lighting plan, there's a couple floodlights that are shown on the patio cover.
Correct.
And I was just concerned, depending on the height, that floodlights are going to shine light out. And I was just afraid that there may be cars heading southbound either on 9G or making the turn onto Creek Road that may get blinded.
Correct. Yeah, I went over those lights with Joe also, and we'll have to provide you a cut sheet on those because he plans on using a shielded downlight there.
Okay, that's fine.
Not a floodlight, but it is. He told me floodlight, and it was just kind of, that's how it ended up.
Okay, that's fine. You can just show us a cut sheet. We just don't want to get glare for cars heading southbound there.
Yeah, I agree.
Liz has some comments, just to clean up the bulk table on items six and seven. Doesn't seem like too big of a deal. And then the other thing that we'll need is what we talked about the last time, is that either you or an engineer are going to have to contact the county health department just to address their concern on records that they apparently don't have on the existing septic system.
Right. Right. We're working on that now. We're hoping they can come up with some records.
I mean, the restaurant was operating for I don't know how many years. It had a food service permit, and they're usually pretty diligent about making sure that there's adequate water and sewer-like facilities. So it is a little strange that...
Correct. I guess there were engineered drawings done in 2007 when the Thai house was in there. And so it's strange that they can't find them. That's the whole thing. We're trying to track that down and get it.
I emailed back and forth with Mr. Wilson, and they were redone in 2007. Mr. Finizzi, I believe, was the excavator. Mr. Wilson believes that any of the paperwork he had on them went up with the fire because his office is what was burned. So he doesn't have any record of it. And I know that you guys have started with Department of Health to see what they can find. So he's also going to try to reach back out to Mr. Finizzi because he can't remember the engineer that did the work.
I'm pretty sure that Jimmy Finizzi died.
Yeah, he was going to...
His wife still lives there. She may have records. Mrs. Finizzi, sorry. So they're going to see.
That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Paulodoro, any comments?
So I understand that the septic's located on the eastern lot?
Yes.
So there's a pipe presumably that goes under Creek Road?
Correct.
Hopefully.
So we're unclear if there's an easement for that pipe or any kind of permission from the town to have that pipe. So we were going to ask that you put a note on your plans that says that the existing pipe is not being amended as part of this site plan approval.
Got it.
So that we're not blessing it, but we're not making you remove it. Just acknowledging its existence.
That it's existing, non-conforming kind of thing, right?
Well, what does that mean?
That there's no easement in place.
Not that it's non-conforming, but whatever property rights you have in it, we're not getting into because it's not being changed.
Got it.
Yeah, that's a good, actually, now that you mention that.
I know. It's two separate lots.
We should, Mike, we should probably, once you get an idea based upon the plans for the Thai house, we should probably show the approximate location of the line crossing of the road. I kind of have an idea where it is, but I think once you get a copy of those plans, that they should show that.
Yeah, I know where it is. Well, we had the end of it exposed. I know it's going to run straight.
Okay. So if we could just show it on here and just call it approximate, just so that it's recorded here? I don't remember if it was on the prior set of plans we approved for the stakeout.
That's what I remember.
No?
So then I have another question for Pete, which is that since these are two separate lots, do we need an easement, a permanent easement in favor of the restaurant lot over the septic area?
Uh...
The Department of Health may ask for that anyways, but...
Yeah, I mean, I guess what you're saying is if, for some reason, somebody, he decided to sell the parking lot?
Or loses one at a tax sale or...
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, that's a good point, actually. Yeah, we should probably have something like that.
So we would just need to see where the approximate SDS is, the pipe, et cetera, so we can work all this out.
I think you know where the SUD disposal system is located, the septic on the other side?
We do. We know approximately where it is.
Your approximate location, and thank you.
I guess another option we were discussing would be to potentially merge the lot into one, so it can't be sold separately. It's a little odd because it's bisected by the roadway.
But we do have, we have a number of Fresco properties throughout the town that do that.
Thank you, Ms. Paulodoro. Now, let me start to my right, Ms. DiNapoli.
My only comment is, yesterday at the meeting with the superintendent of Highway, why was it decided not to do crosswalk? I'm just curious.
The sideline. So when you are leaving the parking area, if you're looking to your left, the hedge, I believe, is on the neighboring property, sticks out a little farther. So that occludes a little bit of your visibility as well. And there's, I would say that that's probably the biggest thing, but also the fact that there's not really any one particular safe location. I was going to put it into the record, but I'll do it now. We were there for approximately 20 minutes, and it was during the day, right around lunchtime, actually. And I crossed very easily, back and forth five times. Just noted, there were times when I couldn't cross because there might be three or four cars coming. And if you're standing in the parking lot, you can actually see pretty easily what's coming down 9G. And they're the ones that go fastest. So it might, given the fact that there may be people wanting to cross at different areas, how we felt more comfortable not trying to put in one particular location. Also, the knowledge of maintenance would have to fall upon the town unless there was an agreement worked out, et cetera. So that's basically...
Well, the other, the other item is that there's specific requirements for crosswalks that aren't at an intersection. And I'm not saying this doesn't meet all of them, but we were just leery, and this is what happened last time when Joe first proposed the stakehouse, that if the crosswalk couldn't meet all the regulatory requirements, that we shouldn't approve it because we obviously wouldn't want to put the town at risk if there was a formal crosswalk there. So that's one of the other items.
The other one is the standard now for crosswalks that aren't intersections. You'll see it at the one on nine now, is that some kind of flashing light that would alert people when there's someone in the actual crosswalk. And those are expensive, those items vary, and need periodic maintenance, et cetera. And we're not sure that the number of people walking back and forth there would warrant it.
Would warrant, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Dexter?
No real comments, except I did read the neighbor letter about the new lights that had been installed. We have had experience that some of these central Hudson lights can be really, really bright.
Yeah, I actually just spoke to Joe about that, and he said he has, that he had, there is no central Hudson light on his property. He said that if the only lights he's ever put on that property were approved lights by the planning board on the approved pole heights and the approved fixtures.
Is it possible there's some lighting there for the, like the...
For the road, maybe, just maybe.
Or maybe just to help with going through the construction or stabilization of the building or...
There's no lights.
Because it sounded like they were new lights.
No, there shouldn't be any lights for the construction. That's all daytime work.
And then the other comment that they had made was about the fencing in the back? And I did not remember if that was going to be replaced.
No, he plans on repairing and painting that fence.
Okay.
The new fence will be right there. Whoops, right there, I believe. Correct?
No, towards the back, all the way along the back.
Oh, right there, sorry. Yep. This is with the new fence, and then this fence, which is what Mr. Clavon was referring to, will be repaired and updated. There's a new section in through here, I believe. But it's not all even. It needs to be repaired.
Right. That's what he was saying.
Yeah, so I'd like to...
He planned on doing it anyway, so he just...
Good, good.
And Mr. Clavon is here in the audience, so he can come and tell us where he thinks the light is. Earlier when I spoke to him just now, he thinks it's on 9G over here somewhere. But we'll find out from...
The light is on 9G. It does face the barck lot. It does face towards, my house is directly across from the restaurant, the last house coming off of Creek Road, right-hand side. The light was put up...
Mr. Clavon, wait, wait till we have public comment because we can't, we're recorded, as you know, and it can't pick you up at this point. So we'll go on. Anything else?
No, no.
Mr. Pickett?
Okay. My concern, one of them was, you're going to upgrade the lighting for the facility, right? Is there any type of plot plan for the lighting to protect?
Yeah, we have a lighting plan as part of the package.
Okay, all right. Okay. And then the other one is, as regards to safety, you're going to put concrete in those fence posts. Are you going to put any type of rebar drop-down in there just to help it out a little bit?
Not in the actual fence post, no, but in the footings. We would have probably vertical bars in the footings, and we're going to be putting the boulders outside of the fence as well.
I think if I read the minutes correctly from the last meeting, I believe you were going to go down to the frost line or one of the two with them, which would involve rebar then in the base.
Right. And after discussing that with the amount of rock that we were looking at, we'll have to look at the detailing of that and overcome the challenge.
Well, you have to pin it, probably. Just drill it and pin it. That's all.
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, I saw the pile, when we were over there the other day, I saw the pile of boulders that are already come up.
Right. He plans on using those.
No shortage. There's no shortage around here.
Yeah. So it's just the nature of that particular parcel and the swelled bedrock depth, which is apparently zero in lots of places.
Correct.
Okay, those cover my two. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Now, after all the discussion and everything we've had, we're leaving the parking lot the way it's always been, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was...
What Mr. Sotero suggested was adding a note saying existing gravel parking to remain, and this can be a condition of approval. But what we felt that they might want to add is, except for parking spaces, the ADA parking spaces, we're not sure that's required to be paved. Ms. Moss already opined that as long as we have a note saying that those could be, that that would be de minimis, whatever you have to do. We're not sure anymore because building codes change all the time.
Right, right. I mean, it does have to be a smooth surface.
That's what I thought.
And be able to be maintained. And I originally did have them shown as asphalt.
Right.
And then I said, well, I don't want to, you know, I want to show all or none.
So the note should be existing gravel parking to remain and except for ADA parking spaces which may be paved as required, something like that.
Yes, I forgot about that. Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Weiser?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, let me summarize before we get to public comment. Oh, and I do want to add one thing myself. We still don't have an answer as to whether the canopy or the awning can be painted. Has that been resolved yet?
I'm not sure. I'll have to check with Joe.
Okay. The other thing that I noticed was in one of the other neighbor's letters, and the highway superintendent confirmed that he has seen trucks parked right here when they're loading on Creek Road, and he would rather not see that occur. So at the moment, there's a bit of, right there, a little L of post and beam fencing. I take it to kind of channel the people to park. I think if you moved the post and beam from there over to line up with the edge of the building, a big truck could come in here and park, and then hand truck. I mean, obviously, they should be, if they're loading, parked back here and then hand truck it back. But people go to the path of least resistance. So if you could have a car, a truck park here instead, it could just be loaded directly into the loading area there. I think that would solve that. In addition, when I was, when we received comments from both Mr. Clavon and the other neighbor about lighting, there's a, it looks like there was a light added over here. I can send you the picture. There's no bulb in it, but there's some kind of fixture.
Yeah, it's like a gooseneck. It's like a gooseneck that was attached.
It's not shown in your lighting plan.
To the end of the building.
Yeah, because that light is actually broken, and it was, I spoke to Joe about that also this evening, and he said, but we're just going to remove it. So...
It's not shown in your lighting plan.
Right, so it'll just be taken off.
I just want to make sure it's from the, okay. Because if it wasn't shielded, it would be just a big naked bulb glaring out at everybody. At any rate, then repair the post and beam fences, adding the boulders and indicates them in the fence posts, the no paving except for the ADA. And then we'll discuss lighting in a moment. And that's sort of the summary of what you heard.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just in regards to your comment about the trucks, should there be a sign or something that says no parking or...
Except for loading or something like that.
Loading area.
Well, no, I guess the area where they're concerned at right now is where they park and they're on the road, right in there. Should there...
Add a no parking sign. I agree. Because that's, I think they're probably, the neighbors seem to be nodding. If you can put a no parking somewhere on the building here where the loading area is, and then, I think what you tell your vendors, this is where you're supposed to park, then it's better.
Yeah.
But right now, because that's fenced off, if you park there in this space...
Then you have to go into the road to get around it.
If you go into the road to get around it, which is why no one's parking there.
Right.
And that same fence is also, if you park back here, no one's going to hand truck it in that way. They would have to go inside. And I guess just because this has been locked while it was a banquet, no one was using that. And you don't really want deliveries going through your nice restaurant either.
Right.
You want it going right back in the back. So that's something for you to consider. But it just, while I was there with the new highway superintendent saying he'd like to see that not happen anymore, I'd like to accommodate those requests. If we can figure out a better way to get the loading trucks there, because that's where they're going to go in anyway, somewhere along there.
Yeah, I think Joe had mentioned sometimes they had, in the previously parked across the street in the other parking lot, and hand trucked across the street. So...
It's even safer if you can get them over on this side, too. So it just depends how much room there is there. That's all I have. And let me open it up for public comment. Mr. Clavon, Clavon, do you want to speak? Just go up and state your name and address, even though we know who you are for the record.
Do I sit or do I stand?
You can sit.
You're going to want to sit?
And if you want to stand, just use the portable microphone.
I was going to say, we just need you to speak into the microphone so that it's captured.
Yeah, one of the microphones.
Okay. My concerns are, is the one, let's start with the trucks and the street. That is a good idea. Get them off to the side because they do block the street, and we know Creek Road, especially towards the end of the day, is quite an artery of cars coming back and forth. And they do, cars line up behind these trucks that are offloading, and when they get a chance, they really come out. My driveway's at the bottom of that hill right there. And by the time they come, they finally get past the truck, they're pissed, and they're flying through there. So it would be best if it was off to the side. And parking across the street to unload, that's not really good. So I think putting, like he said, a sign or something, a loading zone only, off to the side, I think that would help everybody out. He gets to keep his trucks there, but off the road. That's a good one. I'm going to step back on one thing. You talked about the parking lot, you know, no longer you're going to pave it. We do have a heavy runoff of water that comes from that. Whether you pave it or not, or stone, one thing that's about paving it, it'll hold the stone there. But when that comes out with such a rush of water, it takes the stone with it. And I had to call the highway department to get them to clean it up because it does end up across the street. Unless you have a way of catching that stone on the way out, well, that's what we really need to do. If you could find somebody to take that on, that would be a good thing. Really, one reason I'm here tonight is the lighting. Now, the lighting you said that Joe didn't have put up, and it's central Hudson, I don't understand. But if you look at it, it's easy. Anybody going past there tonight, you just go past it. It's shining right onto the parking lot, and it's going right onto my house and even my neighbors. It's just very bright. If there's any way to point it down, that would be it. I mean, that's what we need to do. One of the problems I have with the restaurant now, all the lighting underneath their walkway, it's, the lens is sticking down. So if that lens is sticking down, it's lighting up my house. And one of the unfortunate problems I have with my house is I'm at the end of the line, so nobody else shares the problems I have with the restaurant. And none of these really are a big problem where they can't be shielded with some sheet metal and keep all the lighting. And it's a pretty easy and, it's an easy fix and fairly cheap. If we can get some of the lighting down, that would be great. And one of the other things I have is the fence in that between my yard and the parking lot. It's old, it's tired. I actually like it because it kind of blends with the background. It's very bright. It's not that plastic fence. Just make sure it stays maintained. I have in the past picked up, the place was closed at the time, but I have taken those panels and screwed them back up because I don't want people to, you know, looking at the yard. So it just, keep an eye on it. It wasn't a very good job that was installed. It wasn't Wilson had it put on. It was one of the guys from Proper Grill that was, yeah, Proper Grill. They never opened. They didn't do a very good job. But besides that, that's it. I don't think there's anything else, you know, that's not an easy fix here. Just basically the lighting itself. Somebody wants to come by, we'll take a look at it at night, especially after it's lit up and finally gets power back into it. I don't think it's, it's not that, not that hard. Most of the lighting in the parking lot on this side's okay. It's really underneath this walkway where it gets previous. Here's that big truck right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Not that I want to see that, but it does block the lighting of all the...
I can hear.
The lights that are on. Yeah. So nothing's a hard fix here. It's all okay.
Ms.?
Again, the gravel running off, we can do something with that. Truck's off to the side. That would be great. You stuck in here?
Just pull the microphone toward you.
You're turning your head and you're talking this way, so it's not...
I'm more into having the conversation. I forgot you guys were here. All righty, so putting you guys back.
Easily done.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
The central Hudson light, is the, is the central Hudson light on now even though, even though the restaurant's closed?
It is on right now, yes.
Okay. I'll drive by, I'll drive by on my way home tonight and take a look.
Thank you, because it's off premises. It's not on property.
Well, all right. I don't know. Let me take a look.
It is, they spent like a week on it for some reason. I don't know why. But it's been like a week playing with this light. And it did, there was a light there.
I mean, they can be bright. I mean, there's no doubt about it.
Oh, no, they can. It is. But they took the one light down, and they upgraded to an LED, I guess. Very bright. I mean, it's just like, wow. And it's very hard for me to come out of the drive, especially in the morning. I'm a contractor. Do have a trail back out of there on some mornings, and it's right in the mirror there.
Yeah. All right. Well, let me look on my way home.
I think it's easy enough to point it down.
These are usually, central Hudson sells safety lights. They're mounted on poles. They're tall. They're kind of rectangular. And as I said earlier, they're not, they don't comply with our code. And but if this is the kind of safety light that I'm envisioning, normally the vendor or the applicant, the owner of the property pays central Hudson, so there's a monthly fee for it. So if Mr. Wilson isn't paying it, then I don't know why central Hudson would have it up there.
If it's a safety light, it could be put there to denote the intersection. Because I have one across the street. For me, nobody pays for that. That's probably in the town's bill.
This isn't really out of this, I don't know.
So I think, I think it's probably part of the, you know, intersection thing.
Yeah, I mean, until I go looking at it.
Can you take a look and see where it is?
I'll look at it on my way home tonight.
And we can contact central Hudson to find out.
Yeah, I'll email everybody tomorrow morning.
Listen, the light's great for this parking lot. It is a dark parking lot, and for the people showing up to get in there at night or coming at night, it's actually really a light to have. It just needs to come down. I mean, it just, again, park right in the parking lot. Look at my house. It's just all, thank God, you know, the trees gives you something. In the summertime, it'd be great. But right now, it's bright.
And then I was looking, were you saying that the lights that are under the soffits also cast too much brightness toward you?
They're not recessed, so, you know, the bulb, the bulb, yeah, the bulb is right there. So...
It's like a sealed beam type lens on it.
I saw that.
And that, that's, again, a piece of black sheet metal on the edge would bring the light just off of my house, just off the side. Would it be...
Can you look at that, Mike, to see if there's something that can be retrofitted in there, or maybe they could be changed out or something?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, even if it's on the outside, so it shines down in against the building but not out.
I was just thinking, it's, the problem is, is it's all glass. It's clear glass, so it's just...
Every direction, yeah. That's the problem.
I mean, you wouldn't even need sheet metal. You could just darken one of the sides to restrict it down. There are ways to do this. So, okay.
Can I ask a question about the runoff? And forgive me if you are doing this. To help prevent it, is there a way it could be regraded, the gravel, and some type, okay?
It's rock.
Oh, okay. I was just trying to help this gentleman from...
I mean, that's, they...
So there's nothing you can then put there, even if you don't regrade it to help keep it from running off?
Well, I mean, I know what the gentleman, you know, was talking about because when I went out there, you can see where it's rutted right at the edge of the parking lot and, you know, the road. And that's because when it rains heavy, like the gentleman says, it just comes right down there. I mean, we're kind of in a catch 22 because when it doesn't rain really hard, at least the gravel there will let some of the water soak in. But if we paved it, then we're going to get...
And all the sheet glaze will go right over it.
So I mean, I don't know whether there's a way, and it's... So, I mean, I don't know whether there's a way, and it's gonna be too hard to tell, to tell now, maybe there's a way, when they get around to doing the work, that there's some way to maybe, to maybe channel some of the water right at the gravel interface with, you know, the road, that it can be somehow channeled into, into the grass area, maybe instead of going out onto the road, so, kind of like this, you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
So.
The real problem with this area is, again, the amount of rock that's there.
Yeah.
If we, if we paved, then it's gonna increase sheet flow.
Oh, I was not suggesting we paved it, I was just trying to think of different ways of grading it.
It is all rock.
Yeah, they're
My house, that's why my house is tired and the rest of it, because it's
There's a lot of rock.
They stopped and they put it around it, they did. So, it's all rock.
The only way of doing things.
If there's a way to catch the stone, we, we get a lot of water that runs across it, and it's, it's no big deal.
So, they moved
It's really the stones that come from.
There's no storage for this side of the park, he's been moved to here to try to help reduce water runoff, but the real problem is, is that it's just the natural lay of the land, this flows this way, and I don't know that there's any catchment that's possible for gravel that would
I mean
You guys think about it, see if there's something. I mean, there's not a drain that I can think of that would catch it and then spit it back out, is one of the issues, so to speak.
No, I guess, the only thing I was thinking is, is if there's some way to maybe channel it so it doesn't go right out onto the road, then maybe it goes onto, onto the grass area just a little
What grass area?
There is, there is like a small grass area south of the parking lot.
I'm kind of teasing, I know, I'm sorry.
Actually, it, it was coming down, at one point, I won't tell you the name of who it was, the person who did it, but they actually knocked it, so it goes into the neighbor's yard now, because it was coming down so hard, and again, right where the gravel comes across, like, right where my mailbox is, so the driveway is mailbox, it actually comes past the driveway, totally passing us, and it leaves the rocks right there, but as the kids wait for the bus, those rocks are there, and they, they go flying, definitely, they fly pretty good, so.
All right, well, that's something we're probably gonna have to go look at when they get around to doing the work out there, and maybe we can
There might be some, something you could do in the field, to maybe assist with this.
Right.
Okay. I mean, a longer term solution would be the next time that Creek Road is improved, there might be something to look at there as well, but that's nothing that's, it's in good shape right now, from what I can see.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, I think we did that road in two thousand and, two thousand and eight, and I know some of the homeowners, I don't think it was you, I don't know if there's still the gentleman, isn't there another house behind you?
Yes.
Yes, the parish.
Yeah, well, I know, you know, they were concerned about increase, like, runoff onto their property, and it's just, Creek Road's a tough area, tough area for drainage, because it's flat and it's rock, so to try to get
And the water's flowing into a creek.
Right.
Hence the name of the road.
Behind it, you get the water to the creek.
Yeah, I mean, that's, one of the problems is
It's, it's not optimal, but
I, I walked that whole creek with, waiters on with Jen Rubo and somebody from the DEC, and I also know that most of the neighbors, in order to get a better view of the creek, have cut down all the vegetation, which increases flooding, because there's nothing to absorb and pick up
Exactly.
Yeah, so, it's a problem area, but at any rate
Well, let's see, I mean, let's see what we can do in the field, maybe there's, maybe there's something minor we can do.
Thank you, and thank you for speaking.
But the lighting, I think we can definitely do something about the lighting, like I said, I, I will stop and I'll send everybody an email, and Mike, you're gonna, you're gonna look at the, you know, the soffit lights on the walkway?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to wait until you turn them on again and see what I'm talking about, once the building gets lights on.
I'm aware, but yeah, I saw that.
And then we'll talk, and, not gonna go across the street, we'll figure it out. But, all right, thank you, I'm a little surprised that that lights not has, because it's Forest Park Lot, don't get it.
Yeah.
I think that's it, guys, thanks for your time.
Oh, you're welcome, thanks for coming out. I need to explain to anybody who's listening, this always improves our review to have people come out, neighbors who live there, because you're gonna see more than what we can when we do site visits, we're there for a while and that's it, you live there.
Yeah, it does help, it keeps from, things getting to be worse later on, so, yep.
Very much.
Guys, again, thanks for your time.
Thank you for coming out, nice to meet you both.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else in the public who'd like to speak about this application? Okay, so what I think we should do is continue this to February 7th, and
Twenty first, the 7th's kind of crowded.
I guess not.
Well, Cynthia told me it was a big agenda.
So, are we, are you looking
It was on. All right.
That's fine.
I think that what we, we would probably be able to close the public hearing on the 7th, assuming we can address some of these issues in the interim.
Yep.
And receive anything new back from Mr. Lockwood.
Are you looking to submit a new set of plans?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm gonna email you a list of items that were going to be conditions of approval, but if you take care of it before that, they don't have to be.
Sounds good.
We already have a draft, in other words.
Yeah, if you want to
We know we're having some public comments tonight.
I was gonna ask, do we need him to actually reply a narrative, you know, responses to the comments that he might have
It would be helpful. Well, no, Ms. Axelson said, is there, is there a narrative that covered this, and I said, no, Mr. Lockwood just makes the changes.
It would be nice to know that you said, you know, you say, we've taken this and we addressed this, and
Sure, I can do that.
And why don't we work back and forth, Mike, before you submit this way, I mean, if you have some questions on, you know, like the lighting or something like that, we can like resolve it before you submit, so that
Sure.
So we can get this done.
Yeah, I'll send you a new cut sheet and everything for that.
Yeah, I mean, we can work, we can work back and forth before you, before you submit.
Don't, don't worry about writing too much, some of it will just be C, changed on sheet plan set, C1, whatever, that's how long it will be, but it helps us
It helps to direct us to where the changes are.
Instead of taking all the time to go through the magnifying glass to find everything.
Yeah, and I'm not gonna, the rev bubbles all over.
Right, right, so, but overall, I think this review has gone well, and the changes have been positive ones. Again, if you can check, I'll also email Mr. Wilson, just to check to see if the canopy color can be painted, other than that, it's fairly small, and Victoria can give you, you received the Morse Associates memo today, I believe.
Yes, I did, yeah.
Then those would be conditions of approval, unless you can take care of those two before the next
I think most of them I can, but
And if you, it depends on, again, I saw the pile of boulders, just so some approximate locations, Tad's not gonna know you to defeat on, they move, because they're boulders, they can be moved.
Yes.
And again, this is just for safety purposes, but this is also addressed by DC Planning, they wanted to see something that would protect people.
Sure.
And then otherwise, like I said, I did a summary, take a look at the loading area, thank you, Mr. Clavon, for saying I was correct, it's funny, you don't think you're a planner until you've been doing this a while, then you start thinking about planning, and the water runoff, I'm not sure what you guys can do about the gravel, but it'd be nice if there was
Any, any kind of
You can't create a lip that, that keeps the water on, because then it freezes and causes other problems on the side.
Yeah, let me think about it.
Okay. Otherwise, and people take a picture of Central Hudson light, we'll see what we can do about that, too. Okay, so, can I get a motion to continue this to February 7th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you then, and hopefully that'll be it.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thanks for working so well with us.
You're welcome.
Mr. Clavon, I'll email you, too, because I see your email on here, on the letter, too, so.
Next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Matthew's Auto Sales, make it a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As a preface to the public, this is a previously approved site plan, it was given both a special use permit because of scale, as well as approval to be a auto sales facility. In addition, it was also a residential facility on a second floor, there was a fire, and in going through with, working with the building department, what they would need to do to keep the buildings together is actually more easily solved by separating the residential portion, so that's really all that we're here for. We circulated to DC Planning, who responded, it was a matter of local concern, no other comments, they did, in a private conversation, say they wish that, that we could still push the parking to the rear of the building, it was explained that the building, that the land falls steeply back there.
Cliff, right.
And in addition, they would like to see the auto sales where the patio are, but the patio is one of the prettiest elements to the site, and unless you're proposing that, I personally don't want to see it removed, so, those were just what I believe they call in legal terms, obiter dicta. Asides, they weren't actually, any comments, so we don't have any, any comments from
I'm not sure I can even Google that.
O-B-I-T-E-R-D-I-C-T-A, maybe?
That's okay.
A new word for the day. I read too much, I'm telling you, I'm reading too much case law, oof, you start thinking in Latin terms.
And Phil's not even here to hear it.
I know, and Mr. Alexander's not here, how sad. So, we did not take escrow from our consultants, so there's no comments from the consultants, would there be any comments from the board on this application?
No.
Would there be any comments from the public, would anyone like to speak about this application? There being none, make it a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I prepared a resolution, but I need to make a change at the dais. Did Ms. Moss review this? Did Ms. Moss review this? This, the, the approval resolution? Because Ms. Moss wanted to make sure that we added a post and beam fence, or something to the rear of the, so that, where the land starts dropping, she wants a post and beam fence, so, let me figure out how to add that.
Would be a new condition?
So, basically, I think it would just be condition four.
Yep. Can you make it, make the revision to add a post and beam per
To satisfaction of zoning administrator?
Yes.
Yes.
That's dangerous.
Yes. Just, she can put, tell you where she wants it, and it's not that long either, so, to, oh, wait, revision, add note, this is the thing, is, so, we don't really have a site plan on this, we only have the elevations, which Ms. Moss, one of the conditions is to add a note to say that this is replacing the elevations that were shown in the originally approved site plan, so we'll just add a note that, that a post and beam fence will be added in a location suitable, or as approved by the zoning administrator.
In location.
In location, thank you, with no money. Thank you, Victoria. To be approved, right, by the ZA, okay.
Vision to add a note.
Do we have a final note? Who has this file?
I do.
Can you pass that one over, so Mr. Pickett can read the new condition?
Oh, he can read mine.
Hand-scratched, well, you should see mine.
Or I'll just read that if you want.
Okay.
Okay.
Resolution to grant site plan amendment and approval, Matthew Auto Sales, January 17, 2018, resolution 2017-54A, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grant site plan amendment and approval to the project as shown on the site plan entitled Single Family Apartment Plans, Sheet 0, 3, 4, and 5 of 9, prepared by Paul Terrence, P.E., dated November 21, 2017, and authorizes the chair or his authorized designee to sign the plan set after compliance with the following conditions: payment of wall fees and escrows, revision of the sheet 0 of 9 to add signature blocks for the chair or his/her authorized designee and owner to sign, three revision of 0 of 9 to add the following note: these elevations replace those included in the site plan set approval on October 7, 2015, revised on August 16, 2015, and January 20, 2016, and signed by the chairman on May 16, 2016. Four
Revision
Oh, she has no microphone.
Revision to add a note that a post and beam fence will be added in location approved by the zoning administrator.
Thank you.
Be it further resolved that the applicant is required to obtain all necessary building permits, a certificate of occupancy, and a used motor vehicle license from the Town of Hyde Park before the business operations may begin and the residential unit may be occupied. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, congratulations, good luck, get that going, get it up and running.
Good news.
Nice to see you again, Paul.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda, thank you, concerns the Riverview resubdivision, we received a pretty long brief from Michael Donnelly of Dickover Donnelly &amp; Donovan, Mr. Andros' consult, legal consultants, and they essentially were, it's a argument that the town does not actually have average density subdivision in all cases, everyone had a chance to review my letter?
Yes.
I know that this was reviewed by, thank you, and this was reviewed by Ms. Paladaro, who made an addition of one section involving residential housing, which I thought was perfect, otherwise, she'd tell me I got a gold star, more or less. So, any other discussion, make it a motion to allow me to send it?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that one goes. We also have a referral, a request from the zoning board of appeals to make comment on the Bowlander application, this is actually a use variance and use, as well as area variances, but it's the use variance that's most interesting, so, if you all had a chance to go through the large amount of material
Unbelievable, and, and we didn't even see everything, right?
No, you saw everything.
Okay, we did. Oh, I thought one of your things said it, um
I just want to point out that, to me, there was some inconsistency, Ms. Bowlander says that it was approved for 28 patients, when it was used for veterans, I never saw an approval for 28, the most I saw was 20.
Right.
And this is at the corner of Quaker Lane and Creme Elbow, so, over the years, there was a single family house, and then another one got erected, and then that got to be used for mental patients from the psychiatric center, and then later on, veterans, always, I think, psychiatric patients of one way or another, and I don't know how it got to be that there were suddenly 28 living there, but there's enough rooms for 28 people, now that her parents have both passed away, Ms. Bowlander would like to legalize the situation that's there, which, and then turn it into a three family, which is multifamily, it's not allowed in the green belt. So, my personal concerns were, the ZBA usually sets precedent, the planning board does not, because we look at individual sites, and the aspects of each unique parcel of land, the ZBA sets precedence, I thought, precedent, because they're quasi-judicial, so this is allowing multifamily in an area where you're not, we're not supposed to have it, I mean, I'm thinking about the enclave, which initially, when we were having offline conversations with them, would have loved to have had multifamily out there, instead, they had to do 52 family units. The other is that they attempted to show a financial distress with some of the other uses that are allowed out there, and Ms. Dexter's gonna bring up something, I think, in a moment, that will refute that, but, and Ms. Denapoli, who was intimately involved in the bed and breakfast business, also, I think, will support it, it seemed to me that they wanted the conclusion to be that it would be a financial loss, and then backed into that, because some of the numbers they used, such as paying a manager and a part-time chef $109,000 for the property when it's a B&amp;B, which has to be owner occupied, seemed high to me. So, generally speaking, I dislike use variances, and I would prefer that they would go to the town for a reason, if that's what they want of some sort, but I also understand why the applicants are making this request, because you basically have enough housing there to support three families, and there's a lot of bedrooms, because there were that many people living there at one time, so, my inclination would be to say no, but let me start over to my right, Ms. Denapoli, what would you like to, what's your thoughts?
Um, basically, I concur with what you've already stated. What I can speak fairly confidently on is their mock-up for a bed and breakfast, being a former innkeeper. Um, they used statistics that either were old from 2009 and 2011. Um, as far as I'm aware of, they have not reached out to active, um, innkeepers at this time. They chose low-end pricing of certain B&amp;Bs and not of others. Their cost estimates, if their cost estimates were to be used by me when I ran my inn, I, I would've had to file for bankruptcy. There's no other way for me to say it, they, they were the most extreme, and, and I was very surprised by that, um, from, from laundry, and it didn't matter if you looked at their 10-room B&amp;B versus when they resubmitted it with a four-room B&amp;B. It is lore that you have to be owner-occupied, you would never pay innkeepers the amount of money that they claim, the cost of laundry would never be that amount. First of all, most, all the places that I know of, you do your own laundry, it's done in-house. Um, particularly if it's a four-room B&amp;B, you don't have a chef, you're doing the cooking, that's the point of going to a bed and breakfast, the innkeeper makes you your breakfast. Um, their advertising costs were tremendous, along with what their, um, some of their maintenance fees. Their room charges, as they said, were low, they claimed that you would only make, what was it, 143,000 a year? Which is not accurate, and one of their arguments were, well, there are three of the B&amp;Bs in the area, so why have a fourth? Well, that's, that's like saying, well, there's two or three restaurants in, in a city, so why have a fourth restaurant in the city? The more you have, the better, the more people wanna come to that area, because they think, oh, look at all these places, this must be a destination point. So, their argument that that was not a viable, um, option for them didn't make sense, the fact that they were out in the, outside of town, absolutely, but that just means, then you have to make your place a destination place, which means you, you, you have to work. Now, I'm not suggesting that they make this a bed and breakfast, because this is not the type, like, anyone who has their own business, you have to love what you're doing, but, but their arguments were truly not within the realm of what I would accept as feasible.
Thank you.
So, my vote would be no.
Ms. Dexter.
Uh, so, when I read this, um, I'm okay with the area variance, that was, that seemed very reasonable. Um, the use variance, um, I've been sitting here for 12 years, there's been one use variance in all of that time, I think, to, to, um, I think it would set a really tremendous precedent to grant this. This property evolved over time, they chose to pursue, um, a community residence type of, uh, occupation, where they had agreements with the psychiatric center, and then the veterans administration, and what I was noticing towards the end there was that they were not looking to enhance the property so that they could continue. Um, they were told they needed to do X, Y, and Z to continue, and, oh, well, that's too expensive. That sounds like they were starting to kind of probably exit, exit that type of profession as they got older, but it certainly, uh, they set up the entire, uh, area there to be for that type of use. So, to me, the hardship is entirely self-created, and our zoning allows for community residences in the green belt with a special use permit. We have, in Hyde Park, at least two or three dozen community residences run by, um, Anderson Center, Greystone, Dutchess County Rehabilitation, what was the other one?
Deveraux.
Deveraux, um, and there are others, Ark, there are others, um...
Abilities first, I can go on.
Yeah, abilities first, and this would be, I would think, a prime location for one of those organizations to take. To me, this is not a hardship, you marketed this to those places, and you sell it, and they have the, um, you know, they, they, they know what to do with those types of properties. So, to me, to grant a use variance for this is just, it's frivolous, and should not even be considered.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett? This is your first time to have to comment on a use variance, since you were appointed.
I, I agree with the area variance, I can see where the people, they don't wanna run a B&amp;B, they inherited the property, trying to make good uses of it, um, in all my reading of it, I was leaning toward, yes, I would, I would approve it, and let them do what they wanna do.
That's, that's...
Uh, may run through the Z.B.A., but, um, I would go with the variances.
Okay. Mr. Murphy?
Um, I'm, uh, I lived out of Milledon Streets, know the family for 40 years, probably, um, and I can sympathize with, um, what they're trying to do. I, as a planning board member, I think that parcels would support what they want to. It's a, there's a major intersection with traffic light right next to it. So, we're not talking about cows walking across the street. Um, so, you know, I, if it's, I'm, I hesitate to wanna, uh, grant a, uh, use variance, um, because I, you know, I, I wish there was another way, okay? Wish there was another way, 'cause we could support this kind of thing, okay? So, given the fact that I think that the property was supported, and I wish there was another way to do it, I would tend to say, uh, yes, that we use variances, because it's the only way I can do it in the, you know, if that's the way it has to be, that's the way it has to be, and I'm not crazy about it, but that's the way I...
Thank you. Ms. Weiser?
Um, I also agree with the area variance, accepting that, um, but no, not with the use variance, the economic hardship, the economic, um, unfeasibility of the B&amp;B seems to be a lot, be quite exaggerated, and to Ms. Dexter's suggestion about turning it into another facility, those two options seem economically feasible. So, I, I don't think it's necessary to go as far as to grant a use variance for a three-family.
So, it appears that the response I'll be doing, since there are four of us who recommend against the use, would be, I mean, the use variance would be to say that everyone's in favor of the area, and then I will delineate, um, reasons why arguing against the use variance. I will note that it was not a majority opinion, that some of the board felt that the parcel could support what's there as well. Um, I just need to remind everyone that the Z.B.A. referral, the Z.B.A., uh, they're required to receive our comments, but there's no supermajority required or anything else. That's the town board for legislation, so they can ignore what we have to say, in other words, so, I'll write it down. Um, do you wanna just authorize me to, when, when is this due, Cynthia, do you know?
Their meeting's next week.
Their meeting's next Wednesday.
So, I need to get this out to them as quickly as possible, so, I'll pass this all by you. But I just need a motion to allow me to send a letter with this.
How about, yeah, I, I would authorize you to create?
Yes, create.
Create and send.
I'll pass it by everybody, just to make sure we're all okay. Okay, um, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I believe that's the last item on the agenda, yes?
It is.
And Ms. Whitman has our January 3rd minutes already done, I sent them back to you today.
They are, too.
I know, but I sent them back to you today, so you'll be seeing those shortly. And I, I forgot, we had a really short meeting last time, because I thought, oh my gosh, 44 pages, and I realized the resolutions are 38 pages amongst themselves! That's what took me so long to go through it. So, make it a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.